We cannot emphasize enough, time has run out for some nearly extinct species. There are many groups and individuals who have enabled us to be here today. We're grateful to all of them. We're deeply honored by the dedication and commitment of the members of the Accountability Panel, all of whom are amongst the most respected in their fields, trusted by all to serve the interests of justice. I will now turn the floor over to Hrida Phakri, the Director of Proceedings for this public hearing, who will moderate the two days and introduce the members of the Accountability Panel. Hrida Phakri is an international broadcast journalist and former senior news and programs presenter for Al Jazeera English. She has extensive experience as lead anchor, political correspondent, UN diplomatic correspondent, columnist, and bureau chief for a multiple of international news organizations. She is an extremely skilled moderator, and we are fortunate to have her participation in this public hearing. Hrida, with many thanks for all your efforts, I turn the floor to you. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much indeed, Olivia, for these very kind words of introduction. It is a great pleasure to be here today with all of you. It is also my distinct privilege to serve as Director of Proceedings for this, the Wildlife Justice Commission's first-ever public hearing. I'd like to thank WJC, of course, for this honor and welcome you all once again. Now, although purely symbolic, it is particularly fitting that we meet here today at the Peace Palace in The Hague, which is known the world over as the seat of the International Court of Justice. But perhaps let's me also say from the very outset that this is not a court. These hearings are not judicial hearings. They're not in any way connected to the work of the ICJ. Instead, as you just heard the Executive Director say, these public hearings have been called for by a relatively new, small, non-government organization based here in The Hague, the Wildlife Justice Commission, which was established relatively recently, just in 2015, by a group of international lawyers and legal experts, academics as well, to try to disrupt wildlife criminal networks operating around the world largely with impunity, and try to push the issue onto the world agenda to put pressure on governments and national law enforcement agencies to tackle this issue, to take it seriously, and to act on the body of evidence that is presented to them through the investigations that the WJC undertakes. So the aim of this public hearing is not to put Vietnam on trial, yet somehow the sheer symbolic significance of where we are today, in my view, indicates the seriousness of the crimes we will be discussing and debating over the next two days: poaching and trafficking in wildlife, in endangered species, as Olivia Swagoldman just mentioned, crimes essentially that have not risen in the consciousness of public opinions or in the minds of governments and national authorities to the level of other serious crimes. Somehow wildlife-related criminal activity is largely perceived as a soft crime, and yet when poaching does endanger a species that may become extinct, I believe it does highlight the gravity of such crimes. Just imagine if you could a world, for instance, without elephants, without rhinos, without tigers or whales, something that seems almost unimaginable, but precisely the kind of scenario that many experts, some of whom are with us here today, have been warning about for many years. And when poaching alters the fragile ecosystems, when it threatens to deprive us, humanity, of a certain species forever, I think then, and I wonder if such crimes do not rise to the level of other serious crimes, perhaps even crimes against humanity, however crazy and strange that notion might seem, and certainly whether they shouldn't be treated as seriously as the war on drugs, for instance, and all the resources that is used in that endeavor. So what are we hoping to achieve here in the next day or two in this public hearing? And how will we go about it? As the Executive Director of the Wildlife Justice Commission just mentioned, this public hearing is the culmination of many months of behind-the-scenes intensive diplomatic discussions that were launched to begin with in a spirit of cooperation, and that still retain to a very large extent that spirit of cooperation, even though we are here at this public hearing. And it was done to get the authorities in Vietnam to act on a rather large and impressive body of evidence that was presented to them in January of this year. These efforts involved, as you heard, diplomatic channels, but they did not produce the kind of satisfactory results that the Commission was hoping for, and this is why we are gathering here today, and this is why this issue has been pushed onto the global agenda in this public hearing. The aim of this hearing, let me just say, is to allow the public, all of us, and those watching us via a live web stream as well, but first and foremost, it is to allow the Accountability Panel, and five of their distinguished members are with us here today, it is to allow them to examine the body of evidence, and let me just say as well that they have received the map of facts, as we call it, the evidence that WJC has put together. They received it two months ago, but today they will be here with us on stage, and they will be listening to the presentation that will be put forward by the Chief of Investigations. And at the end of the two days, we hope they will come to conclusions, to findings, to recommendations that will then enable the Commission to determine what the best steps might be to try to get the authorities to act and prosecute these crimes in a satisfactory way. Let me say also that during the course of this two-day hearing, we'll be taking a close look at all the evidence that form the basis of the case, evidence that exposes the way transnational criminal networks operate largely with impunity. We'll be looking at some key suspects in the illegal trade of wildlife products centered in and around the village of Niki, which is just some seventeen kilometers south of the Vietnamese capital Hanoi. The five distinguished members of the Accountability Panel who are here with us and who represent some of the best legal minds, legal scholars, academics, journalists, and they also come from different parts of the world, they will have that ultimate responsibility to study the evidence presented to them and to share their findings and recommendations with all of us. So as I said earlier, this will allow the Commission then to determine what the best course of action might be in trying to ensure that the competent Vietnamese authorities act on what it believes is a highly detailed investigation and evidence of criminal acts which, in its view, should be prosecuted. So today, the Chief of Investigations of the Wildlife Justice Commission will lay the foundation for this case with a framework presentation of the map of facts, summarizing the investigation, and also calling on witnesses and experts, investigators, to tell us in detail what they have seen over this twelve-month period, which is how long the investigation into the criminal or alleged criminal activities in Niki in Vietnam were taking place. We'll also seek to show what steps the Vietnamese authorities have taken to address wildlife-related criminal activity. As I said earlier, this isn't a trial, it is not a mock trial either. It's an opportunity for the Accountability Panel and for all of us, the public, to look at the fact-based evidence, to ensure that the perpetrators of these crimes, transnational, organized criminal networks increasingly sophisticated, are prosecuted by the authorities in Vietnam and elsewhere, and jurisdictional competencies over such crimes, those countries that have those, and in some instances encourage governments to enact legislation to prosecute crimes when existing legislation is deficient in respect of wildlife criminal-related activities as well. So this public hearing will set to do all of this, we hope. It is also not intended to be one-sided, I should say. Vietnam was formally invited to participate and participate fully in this hearing. The Vietnamese government, however, elected to send an observer to this hearing but not to formally participate. So I'd like to extend a warm welcome to the observer, and also a warm welcome to the Vietnamese people who may be watching us today and following these proceedings through the webcast that is taking place. We'll do our best to fully represent all the evidence the investigation has found and the measures the Vietnamese authorities have or haven't taken in connection with this investigation. Now perhaps just a few housekeeping notes before I introduce the Accountability Panel members and invite them to join me on stage. This public hearing, as you know, was intended to reach as wide a global audience as possible. So we have representatives from international networks who are here following this public hearing. We have camera crews here as well. We have a couple of camera poles just at the exit, at the entrance to this hall, and we encourage everyone to perhaps stop by at some point and leave comments about this public hearing and the work of the Wildlife Justice Commission. Interpreters will be providing simultaneous translation into Vietnamese throughout these hearings. You can get translation devices if you need, they're just here at the back of the hall. The interpreters would also greatly appreciate, I'm told, if we could all speak at normal speed, perhaps, and preferably also speak a little slower than we normally do. So I apologize in advance if I need to interrupt anyone for going too fast, and I know that I will constantly need to remind myself as well of the need to slow down. Now, for any interview requests as well, I should just say that there is a media team here to assist. And of course, all those of you who use social media, please do. It's important to get the word out, to amplify the message as much as we can, and to spread the word about what is taking place here over the course of the next two days. So if you tweet, do send us your comments, your tweets and questions on Twitter. It would be helpful if you could always use the public hearing hashtags in your posts, as you see there, hashtag WJCVietnam, and we will do our best to share these comments and questions in our public discussion tomorrow. You can also submit comments and questions at the information desk before nine AM or during the lunch break, so before nine AM tomorrow, before the start of our second day. Members of the audience can make any comments they want, and we will do our best to share them here with the audience. We're also very much looking forward to a discussion with interested parties, representatives from NGOs, that will take place tomorrow as well. But first things first, let's focus on today's proceedings. Today, we will lay the foundations, as I said, for the case, and we will focus on the presentation of the map of facts. Tomorrow, we will bring in views from interested parties in the morning and the wider public in the afternoon. So today, the Chief of Investigations will present key findings and will ask experts to elaborate further on the evidence. I would have the opportunity to ask any questions of clarification, so will the Accountability Panel members, who will be on stage in a few moments, and who were selected by the Commission on the basis of their impartiality and outstanding credentials. I should also just quickly mention that the map of facts has been reviewed by two members of the Accountability Panel before it was sent to the relevant authorities in Vietnam. The panel, though, is represented here by five of its members. None of them are among the reviewers, but they've all had the map of facts for two months now, and it is my pleasure to introduce them and ask them to take their seat here on stage. Let me begin with Justice Philippe Kirsch, if I may. Monsieur Kirsch is a prominent judge. May I ask you to please join me on stage, Monsieur Kirsch? He is a prominent judge and diplomat. Many of you are familiar with him. He has had a very distinguished career with the Canadian Foreign Service. He was the first president of the International Court, the International Criminal Court, the ICC, between 2003 and 2009, and he, of course, played a pivotal role in the negotiations of the Rome Statute, which led to the establishment of the ICC. May I also call on Justice Diego Garcia Sayan, who was president of the Inter-American Court of Human Rights between 2010 and 2013, and was a justice on the court from 2004 to 2015. He's also a former Minister of Foreign Affairs and a former Justice Minister of Peru. Justice Isaac Linaola was appointed just last week, in fact, as a judge on the Supreme Court of Kenya. Congratulations. Prior to that, Justice Linaola was the presiding judge of the Constitution and Human Rights Division of the High Court of Kenya. He's also Deputy Principal Judge of the East African Court of Justice. Professor Edgardo Buzkalia is a distinguished research scholar in law and economics at Columbia University in New York City. He's also president of the Citizens Action Institute, which is a Mexican civil society organization aimed at establishing international networks for rescuing and protecting victims of transnational organized crime. And last but certainly not least, Mischa Glennie is an award-winning British journalist, historian, and author who specializes in organized crime and cybersecurity. His bestselling book, Macmafia, looks at organized crime around the world and was translated into more than thirty languages. He's also a former BBC correspondent. It's an honor to have you all here at the public hearing. I think your presence is testimony to the importance, the innovative role that this public hearing and the Wildlife Justice Commission can hopefully play in holding countries and governments and law enforcement agencies to account when it comes to the commission of wildlife and wildlife-related crimes. Your willingness to be part of the Accountability Panel in and of itself, I think, indicates the importance you attach to this issue, and for that, as Director of Proceedings and on behalf of the Wildlife Justice Commission, I'd like to express our sincere gratitude. Now, we look forward to the findings that will emerge from this hearing to inform and support relevant authorities in addressing the issues we mentioned, and also to sensitize the public and authorities alike that such crimes have to be taken more seriously and have to be prosecuted. And although, as you can see, there's a slight gender imbalance, let me just reassure everyone that it by no means reflects the membership of the Accountability Panel as a whole. We have within the Accountability Panel, but unfortunately not here with us today, a number of eminent women jurists and legal experts. And now, before we begin with the official proceedings, it is my pleasure to invite our first distinguished speaker, Judge Motu Noguchi, to join me here on stage to discuss the need to fight against impunity in tackling wildlife-related crimes. Judge Motu Noguchi is Chair of the Board of Directors of the Trust Fund for Victims at the International Criminal Court. He's a former international judge at the Supreme Court Chamber of the Extraordinary Chambers and the Courts of Cambodia, in short form, the so-called Khmer Rouge Trials. He's also an advisory council member of the Wildlife Justice Commission. Judge Noguchi, clearly you have extensive experience in taking on some cases where you have tried to bring justice to people who have suffered some of the most serious kinds of human rights violations. You've dealt with massacres of fellow human beings, war crimes. Compared to such crimes, wildlife trafficking appears almost trivial, almost secondary. And yet, you are here at this public hearing. What motivated you to be part of this?
As we all know... Last care, transnational crimes are prevalent in many different areas, and crimes against wildlife are one of the most outstanding examples. Despite warnings and cries, these crimes continue to be prevalent and increase both in number and on scale, and the culture of impunity prevails. So in this regard, compared to other so-called most serious international crimes, there is equivalent significance to tackle the culture of impunity in this particular area of crimes. That's why I got interested in joining this endeavor.
How important, though, is it to strengthen the rule of law, international and national legislation, to prosecute wildlife-related crimes? Do we have the kinds of robust pieces of legislation that we need? Is it just an issue of implementation, or does it go deeper than that?
To my knowledge, most of national sovereign countries have its own domestic laws prohibiting and punishing wildlife-related crimes or poaching, trafficking of these crimes. What is most lacking is, of course, enforcement, and this is based on the absence of necessarily political will. So it seems that it is high time to provide functioning mechanisms to encourage the law enforcement authorities of the relevant government to take concrete action. We are already not at the stage of talking about what necessarily laws are.
You say we're not there yet. You mentioned the fact that political will is deficient. Some people might also argue that it's a question perhaps as well of resources, but also to what extent, in order to implement the laws that are already in place, to what extent is it important to mobilize public opinion behind such campaigns? Because, as I said earlier, in the perception of many people, trafficking in animal products is simply not seen as a major crime. Some might even wonder why you would focus so much on this when there are more pressing human rights violations around the world that might require more of the world's attention. Why should it matter so much to stop wildlife crime? And how clearly, in your view, does it affect other transnational organized crimes if left unchecked?
Wildlife crimes are one of the most outstanding criminal crimes in terms of the amount of illegal profit, and it is also source of other illegal criminal networks, including corruption, as was mentioned earlier today, or money laundering, or even the conduit to trafficking of human trafficking or drug trafficking. It simply is a core part of the global or international organized criminal networks, and it is one of the source of the biggest profits. So tackling wildlife crime itself is, of course, important, but it's also important for the purposes of tackling other crimes of the similar scales and magnitude.
But how do you go after the people who really matter? We heard earlier, the Executive Director of the Commission mentioned the fact that quite often it is the so-called small guy, the poachers, who are caught, but people in the higher echelons of government or law enforcement agencies are the ones who are so well-connected, so powerful, have such a far-reaching networks of connections that they very much feel protected and immune to prosecution. How do you even begin to tackle that aspect of it?
Again, here the issue is the political will. We are not talking about the alternative method of prosecution, as in the case of the International Criminal Court, for example. They have its own investigation, prosecution, and trials. But the Wildlife Justice Commission is taking a very innovative approach in encouraging the relevant authorities of the government to take necessarily action in terms of investigation, prosecution, and punishment.
But could this approach somehow also have unintended negative consequences in that the naming of shaming of certain countries in such a public setting could have those unintended negative consequences? Or does it, for you, from the perspective of international criminal justice, actually serve as an important positive mechanism?
Yeah, I'd like to bet on the positive side. Having seen or having involved in the international criminal tribunals for some time, it simply takes too much time and too much cost sometimes, even in dealing with the most serious international crimes. And the international community is not in a position to fund for the establishment of yet another similar mechanism for yet another type of crimes. So the Wildlife Justice Commission is a very innovative institution in that it doesn't require millions of dollars of funding to be established and to be maintained, or it doesn't have hundreds of staff to operate. Instead, it is a nonprofit organization funded by a relatively modest fund, and it is composed of a very small number of staff, also dedicated and professional. So once this kind of mechanism functions, in my view, it could provide a very tremendous potential to the functioning of international criminal justice. It is indeed a new approach.
And I wonder how much we could learn from what has taken place over the last few years in your own country, Japan? When there's so much talk about the continuing, perhaps even increasing, demand within Asia in wildlife animal products, your own country, Japan, was a leading market for rhino horn back in the 1970s. Then in 1980, Japan ratified the Convention on International Trade in Endangered Species (SAITIs). Demand reduction strategies seem to have worked in Japan. What were the main planks of that strategy? And are we likely to see something similar in Vietnam? And if not, would it be a lack of capacity, as you said earlier, a lack of political will, government priority perhaps, or something else?
Yeah, I think it's a combination of the political will and supplementally provision of the technical capacity. In terms of the technical capacity of investigation and prosecution, the international community could assist. However, the political will must come from the government itself, and the continuous and sometimes painful outreach activities is necessary to remind the government of the seriousness of the issue. And of course, in case of Japan, many years of continuous outreach has produced tangible result, I think.
Just finally, Judge Motu, before I let you go, just a sense from you on how much of a milestone you think this public hearing will represent, and how important its role will be in the overall scheme of things.
I think this public hearing, for the first time at the Wildlife Justice Commission's public action, is really important. This is not only to provide evidence in public, but also to invite the international community to take serious interest in the issues. And I hope that you are all here, not to be observers, but to participate in the proceedings. This is what actually the Wildlife Justice Commission is intending. Its proceedings are based on the high level of transparency, participation, and dialogues. So these two-day proceedings is one of the highly important part of the entire mechanism, and I'm very pleased to see that you could have joined this important event here today and tomorrow.
Judge Noguchi, thank you very much on behalf of the Commission for being here and for these very invaluable insights. Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you.
Now, of course, much of this illegal trade and trafficking in wildlife must be tackled at the source. What is the level of concern and responsibility of African governments to take measures to curb these activities and bring perpetrators to justice? To discuss this aspect of the issue from the perspective of a source country, or perhaps even more accurately, a source region, it gives me pleasure to introduce now here onto the stage Judge Fatoumatu Diara, who's a lawyer and judge from Mali. And as she makes her way up to the stage, let me say a few words about Judge Diara. She's president of the Council of the Université des Sciences Juridiques et Politiques de Bamako in Mali. She was one of the first judges elected to the International Criminal Court and was the first vice president of the ICC. She has also served as a judge for the International Criminal Tribunal for the former Yugoslavia. Judge Diara, thanks very much for being here. You're also, as mentioned earlier by the Executive Director of WJC, one of two Accountability Panel members who review- panel members who reviewed the map of facts and its update before they were sent to the relevant authorities in Vietnam and later on in China. Kamudoni Yasula is the other person who looked at this. He's a special prosecutor from Malawi. Without getting into too much of the evidence, obviously, could you explain for us the review process and what your role entailed?
I acted as a reviewer of the map of facts and its updates. The Wildlife Justice Commission gave me a Kamudoni Yasula once it was completed. Our role was to raise questions and provide a credible review of the information before it is given to the relevant government. This is an important part of the Wildlife Justice Commission process and ensure that the government is confronted with credible evidence. We carefully review all the information and ask questions. If we have found that more information were needed, were necessary, or that there was no sufficient evidence against a particular suspect, the Wildlife Justice Commission would have been bound to seek more information or remove that aspect of suspect from the map of facts or updated.
You seem to have been satisfied with what you have read to date when it comes to the evidence, but what about the investigation itself? How would you describe that side of things?
We were satisfied personally with the evidence we had. We concluded that the evidence was credible enough to move forward and to present it to the government for them to take action on this basis.
Okay. Judge Diara, we focus a lot, of course, on the responsibility of Asian countries such as Vietnam to stop the illegal trade and trafficking in wildlife. Essentially, we focus on the demand side of the equation. Just how important is it to address the supply side in source countries in Africa?
In Africa, it will be necessary to educate people after to our leaders because Africa has a lot of priorities about people. People don't have medical care. They need to send their children to school to provide the population with food. So make them invest a lot of energy in fighting against wildlife, wildlife crime will be difficult.
Well, I think it's understood that, of course, there are competing and more pressing, urgent issues that any government, certainly the, the less wealthy governments of Africa will have to contend with. But, but on the other hand, we don't see significant arrests or prosecutions of wildlife traffickers in African countries. I have to say that Kenya, perhaps, to a certain extent Tanzania as well. But Kenya leads the way in prosecuting wildlife criminal networks. Just recently, we're talking earlier about the importance of going after the kingpins themselves, and that is something that the Kenyan government has done recently. Tanzania has also taken very important steps as well. But why don't we see more, more prosecutions, in a sense, simply more arrests if this is an important issue, or governments simply not taking it seriously enough?
They have a relevant text against wildlife, wildlife crime, but the implementation is not easy because a lot of problem. And Isaac will be qualified to provide you with more explanation, more than me.
But why do we see this reluctance, though, these endemic delays? Is it also to do with corruption?
Hmm.
But I don't mean to put you on the spot in any way, but...
Actually, I did not work on the behavior of population and politician, but I only work on the map of facts.
Okay. I perhaps also want to ask you, a good, a good time to maybe shift slightly? No, but just looking at the specific case of your own country, many people wouldn't necessarily associate Mali with any kind of poaching, but I know there is poaching going on in the northern parts of Mali that has to do with a very rare breed of elephants. And much of it, in fact, as Judge Motu Noguchi was alluding to earlier, goes to financing a lot of the conflicts in the region. Could you expand a little bit on this and why this could make it perhaps much more of an issue of concern for governments in the region to stop this because of the illicit money that then goes into funding these wars and conflicts? Or perhaps the opposite, in fact?
That is very important. But the one who are, who are aware wildlife crime is founding war and GADs are not the same who take a decision against this crime. So it is not easy in my country to fight against wildlife crime.
It's not easy, but how important? Just final words, perhaps, on, on how crucial you think it is to address this issue in this public setting and from this point on as well, in a more serious way, in order to implement legislation at the national, international levels? And just how confident are you that this kind of public hearing can have a positive impact to sensitize authorities and the public, both in Africa and in Asia?
I inform you here, we will have in January, a big international conference of French-speaking This will be a relevant occasion to make a statement from Wildlife Justice Commission to the public in order to make their know, which is very important, to fight against wildlife justice crime in order to stop founding of GADs and war in that region.
Thank you very much. We shall be following this with great interest. Judge Diara, thank you very much indeed for being here and for giving us a little perspective on Africa, even though you do not represent any African government. Thank you very much indeed. So where then does all of this leave African youth and their involvement? Let's discuss the impact wildlife crime has on local communities, and let's look at what role, if any, the youth is playing to protect their national heritage. Nadav Ossendriver is a rhino youth ambassador. He embodies his generation's passion for wildlife, having grown up as an obsessive visitor. I think I'm, I'm right in calling you an obsessive visitor to Kruger National Park in his native South Africa, which is also home to the world's largest rhino, if dwindling population, the world's largest rhino population. Nadav has been actively involved in rhino anti-poaching awareness campaigns for many years, and he is only 21. As a schoolboy a few years ago, when you were just 15 or 16, you set up a wildlife trafficking website, offering real-
Tracking, not trafficking.
My apologies. There we go. Point of order, correction, thank you. You set up a wildlife tracking website, offering real-time updates, trafficking is on my mind, real-time updates on animal sightings in South Africa's Kruger Park. You actually ran the site during your breaks. I should say when most of us at your age were simply running around during our, our breaks. Latest Sightings has become one of the top 10 most viewed channels in the country and getting thousands of followers around the globe as well. You'll tell us about this in just a moment, but first off, let me just ask you to tell us about the importance for you as a young South African, the importance and what it means for you to protect your country's rhino population. What made you involved? What made you get involved in this campaign?
So I remember when, when I was eight years old, I moved to South Africa and I already wanted to learn more about South Africa and Africa and its heritage. And so the best way to do that was to go to the game reserve. My parents thought that, you know, Africa is the most important part of its heritage is its wildlife. And so at eight years old, I went to the Kruger National Park, one of the most iconic sites for wildlife in the world. And when I went there, it was on this trip that I already learned what, you know, what wildlife is to Africa and how important its animals are, and especially rhinos. And it's so important to, you know, to keep them safe and around, to, you know, to show the world, you know, the amazing creatures that we have and that we need to protect.
But how important is this issue for fellow South Africans, for the other young people in your countries and in countries where there is still wildlife?
So it's extremely important, you know, tourism, especially in countries in Africa and South Africa, is mainly driven by, you know, people wanting to go on safari. And so a lot of, you know, a lot of the reasons why people go to Africa is to visit these, these wildlife areas. And one of the biggest reasons why it's so important is once, you know, if, if these animals aren't around, you know, Africa and its tourism can really go down a lot. And, and that doesn't only affect, you know, obviously, it's a tragic and irreversible loss that we have when, when animals go extinct, but it's also people who are working around these game reserves and have jobs will also lose that. And so it's already, it's a huge issue that, that affects everyone, animals and humans.
And just last year, you were one of the few, I think you were six in all, youth rhino ambassadors who went to Vietnam on a mission to help promote the prevention of rhino poaching in what was known as Operation Game Change. Vietnam, as we all know, is often referred to as the epicenter of the rhino horn trade. What struck you the most during your visit there, during this campaign and your meetings with fellow Asians?
So I think what's, what's really exciting is that there are a lot of projects that are dedicated to protecting wildlife and rhinos and anti-animal trafficking. And, and so last year, with Operation Game Change and Project Rhino Kezitn, I went to Vietnam to, to kind of educate the community there about the crisis of poaching and animal trafficking and what's happening there. You know, and I think the biggest thing that struck me the most was that people didn't really know what rhinos were as, as animals or elephants, you know, as animals. They knew them as a, as a horn or a, or a tusk. And so, you know, that, that was the biggest thing for me was to, to try and teach them that rhinos are actually beautiful animals that, that live in, you know, live in a game reserve and have, you know, have families or herds, you know, and, and stuff like that. And that was kind of, you know, back in South Africa with Latest Sightings and, and that community, we strive to teach people around the world about animals as animals and not as just, you know, an issue in the world that, that, you know, people don't really know why it's, why it's such an important issue.
I mean, you talk about the importance of teaching, educating, but, but much of the hope that many people have in campaigns like this is pinned on the new generation, that they have a different sense and perception of the issue. Did you find that you had to also teach and educate, you know, young Vietnamese people? And was there really a game change, a meeting of the minds when you went there?
So the youth in Vietnam is, is the audience that we really went to, to go and try to educate. You know, we spoke at schools, at universities, at colleges, and, and it was really, it was amazing to see how a lot of them did know about what was happening and, and they did know a lot about the, the history of this poaching, but just equally, a lot of them didn't know, you know, they didn't know, you know, they knew that animal, that horns, you know, come from rhinos, but they didn't know that animals had to be killed to get those horns. They didn't know, you know, sometimes that, that rhinos are actually living beings, you know, they just know that we must stop buying horns, but a lot of them just didn't know what was the issue. And so, yeah, the, the youth there is, is really, was the main, the main audience of who we were trying to educate. And, and I think we did, we did manage a lot, you know, of teaching them and just creating awareness.
What for you would represent success in the fight against wildlife? What does it depend on most and foremost? Is it, is much of it going to have to depend on mobilizing people, NGOs, civil society in awareness campaigns, enacting new laws and legislations, international public hearings like this? What do you think should the focus be on?
So I think, I think there are two, there are two aspects that I think are really just as important. One is, again, teaching the world about wildlife and, and showing them and educating them about wildlife in their natural habitat and, you know, not making it a scary thing, you know, not showing videos of, you know, rhinos being hacked to death, but showing happy videos of elephants running around. And with Latest Sightings, that's what we do. That's, that's one of the biggest things that we do. We share, you know, just happy stories, we share amazing sightings, and that's one aspect. I think the other one is especially what, what this public hearing is doing is, you know, we've seen the reports and we know that there's a crisis, but what we're doing here is just bringing it together and actually trying to, you know, to, to, to make action and to execute on, on those reports and actually, you know, try and get people arrested for what they're doing and, and actually taking action.
And as you say, there's a whole set of challenges to deal with. We talked about the political will not always being there, financial resources lacking in some cases, skilled human resources as well. And let me just mention that you dealt with poaching, poaching in South Africa's Kruger National Park, 20,000 square kilometers, a huge area, which is roughly half the size of the Netherlands or Switzerland. And South Africa is one of the relatively more wealthy countries within Africa. So based on your experience, what do you think South Africa can do in order to lead the way on this issue?
So in terms of how we, how we help with poaching and stopping it is, you know, through these live reports, rangers can go out immediately and protect these, you know, protect animals that have been reported to be injured or, you know, undergone some poaching activity. And so I think South Africa has a lot of signal and a lot of, you know, internet communication. I think that's one of the biggest reasons why my community of Latest Sightings has been able to grow. And I think one of the biggest, really easy, actionable ways that, that other countries can really take, take a stance is to maybe just help a bit with the internet connection so that people, you know, can actually report what they're seeing in terms of poaching and stuff like that. Because, you know, people are seeing it, but maybe they can't actually report it. And so I think in South Africa, that's probably the biggest way that, that we, whether we are able to help, is the communication and getting, you know, getting in contact with the right people instantly.
And of course, much of the international community's hopes will be pinned on people like you, Nadav Ossendriver. Thank you very much for being here with us today. Thank you. So we heard some of the key arguments and urgent issues surrounding crimes against rhinos and other endangered animals, and the impact all of this has on the communities living nearby, why it is so important to take measures to put an end to these ongoing violations and the illegal trade in wildlife, and so important and crucial to hold those responsible, accountable. Now, this brings us to the official part of this public hearing, and it is now my distinct privilege to introduce the parties to this case. Marcus Asner will represent the Wildlife Justice Commission's chief of investigations at today's public hearing. Mr. Asner was an assistant United States attorney in New York from 2000 to 2009. He was chief of the Major Crimes and Computer Hacking Unit for two years and served in the Public Corruption Unit. He's managed over 200 investigations and prosecutions, and he currently serves on President Obama's Advisory Council on Wildlife Trafficking, where he chairs the Subcommittee on Enforcement. So a great pleasure to have Mr. Asner here, who will be starting the proceedings very shortly. I would like to say, though, that the Vietnamese government, as I mentioned earlier, decided not to formally participate in the hearing, but to send an observer to the public hearing. We'll do our best, as Mr. Asner I know will, to fully represent all the evidence the investigation has found and tell us in detail about the measures the authorities have taken in connection with this case. As Mr. Asner conducts his presentation, members of the accountability panel will of course have the chance to ask any questions at any point, to clarify any of the evidence that Mr. Asner will present. We will also have the opportunity to do so, I believe, following the testimony of the witnesses. And importantly as well, if we haven't gotten to some of the questions, we would certainly leave about five or 10 minutes before each break to get to your questions and concerns. So with this, I now hand the floor to Mr. Asner.
Thank you. So, Madam Director, esteemed panel, ladies and gentlemen, I want to take you back to five weeks ago, on the 8th of October 2016. On that day, an undercover investigator working with the Wildlife Justice Commission went to the village of Ni Khe, just south of Hanoi in Vietnam. He was posing as a businessman from Chi- He was posing as a businessman from China who was looking to buy large quantities of ivory, ivory that he would buy and then take to China to sell it. He first went to a store in Ni Khe, and after explaining that he was looking for bulk quantities of ivory, he was taken to a mobile phone store about a kilometer away. And ladies and gentlemen, this is what he saw. This is undercover video. Underneath this tarp was over 400 kilograms of ivory. And this was five weeks ago. Now, ladies and gentlemen, this was not the first time that investigators working for the Wildlife Justice Commission had seen illegal wildlife being sold in Ni Khe and a number of villages around that area. In fact, investigators working on this investigation had been there on five previous occasions: in July of 2015, September of 2015, October of 2015, and then March and June of this year. And here are some of the things they saw during their visits. They saw massive quantities of rhino horn. They saw tiger skins for sale. And of course, they saw huge quantities of elephant ivory, both worked ivory and raw tusks, all for sale, just like we see right here. Now, the Wildlife Justice Commission team conducted or made a conservative estimate of the quantity and value of the illegal wildlife that they, in the investigation, had observed. And here's what they saw. They saw over 100 kilograms of rhino horn, and that's worth about 42 million on the black market. There were over $3 million worth of tiger parts, skins, teeth, bones, and over 4,600 kilograms of elephant ivory. That's about 6.8 million US dollars. In fact, they observed what was a sprawling, organized, and sometimes surprisingly open market focused on trading in illegal wildlife, wildlife that included massive quantities of rhino horn, elephant ivory, tiger skins and bones, turtles, pangolin scales, and a whole lot more. They saw ivory and rhino parts openly advertised on the streets in Ni Khe. They found approximately 50 different businesses where traffickers were busy selling and processing illegal wildlife parts, often quite openly for everybody to see. And they encountered 51 different people engaged in the wildlife trafficking business. And what we put up here is a circle, a chart, that we're not going to go over it in detail, but it gives you a sense that these are the various different individuals who ultimately the investigation established were involved in this trade, and the lines represent connections between them. And of course, all told, they estimate that they saw during the course of the investigation over 53 million in illegal wildlife parts. Now, let's cut for a moment to a gory detail. How many animals were killed, were slaughtered to supply the illegal products seen during the investigation? Well, the Wildlife Justice Commission did an estimate of that, and here's what they came up with. Over 400 rhinos killed, they estimate, and in fact, maybe as much as 579 rhinos killed. Over 570 elephants killed, as many as 900 elephants killed. And 158 to maybe 225 tigers killed. Now, one of the things we're doing over today is if you look over on the screen on the far right from the audience's point of view, you'll see a tally of the number of animals killed. And you can look up there as we go through the map of facts and the facts that we present today, and you can take a look over there as we start calculating the numbers as we walk through the evidence. So I want to take a few minutes right now to talk about what we hope to do today. As our director just informed you, my name is Marcus Asner, and I'm a lawyer in New York City. In my past life, I was a prosecutor at the U.S. Attorney's Office in Manhattan, and I serve on President Obama's Wildlife Trafficking Advisory Council. At least I do this week. I also serve on the Advisory Council of the Wildlife Justice Commission, and I'm here today presenting a summary of the Wildlife Justice Commission's investigation into trafficking in Vietnam on behalf of the Chief of Investigations. The results of this investigation are laid out in considerable detail in these very voluminous and detailed maps of facts, these reports that the Wildlife Justice Commission refers to as the Maps of Facts. We'll see them later, but you can see, this is one of them, and this is the other, and you'll see there's multi-volumes there, and I promise you, I will not read those to you today. We're just going to do a summary of them. So we're not going to go over every detail, but what I do plan to do is introduce portions of the evidence today, all with a view towards giving the accountability panel an understanding of the nature and type of the evidence gathered during the investigation. So what will the evidence show? You're going to see that the evidence will focus on an area of northern Vietnam and a bit over into the border region of China. And to help orient everybody, what we've done is prepared a quick video showing some of these maps. So if we could play this and stop at various points. So you'll see, this is Vietnam with Ho Chi Minh City on the bottom, on the south, and then Hanoi and Ni Khe up at the top. And this is the area we're mainly focused in at the top here. Much of the activity took place in Ni Khe, which is a small village south of Vietnam. And you'll see here in the, in the circles, there are, I think, a number of premises, some 20-something premises where they observed wildlife trafficking going on. This is from the streets of Ni Khe. Here is some of the ivory that they saw during the course of the investigation. This is another village where the investigators went, and they were taken there by some of the people who were steering them. And there they saw these tiger skins, and this was offered for sale. I think there were four tiger skins in this picture. They also went to this town called Phu Ki, and there, again, they were taken to premises. And what did they see there? Again, they see worked ivory. These are ivory bengals, all offered for sale quite openly in this town. They also went to another town called Bay Un, and everybody has to forgive my pronunciation, I am from Texas. And again, they see raw ivory, and this was offered for sale there. They also went further north, up to China, because some of the trafficking, or a lot of the trafficking, was destined to be transported into China. And what do they see here for sale? Or it's worked ivory pieces, both here and other ones. And then across the border, in a little town called Mong Khai? There's more ivory, and then they also see smuggling across the river. And here's an example where one of the individuals who takes these boats back and forth across the river is smuggling, actually in this instance, from China over to Vietnam. And this is the Khlong River, which is between China and Vietnam, and this is where a lot of the goods go across. And they also visited an area called the Friendship Pass, which is also in this vicinity at the border region between China and Vietnam. Now, and what about the trafficking? What did the investigators see during the course of their undercover visits? As mentioned, they encountered a large-scale, highly organized, and sometimes shockingly open market for illegal wildlife. A key to the wildlife trade were interpreters, translators, multiple women who served as sort of Chinese language interpreters and tour guides. The interpreters who are introduced, who introduced our undercover investigators to the wildlife trade in Ni Khe and surrounding areas, these were the people who were the guide, the entree into the trade. The interpreters ultimately led the investigators to over 50 locations and introduced them to 51 different people who were involved in the trade. Now, much of what the investigators saw was actual physical wildlife products, parts of animals. And if you had the right interpreter to guide you, the village of Ni Khe and the surrounding areas just opened up to you and essentially became a supermarket for illegal wildlife products. Illegal wildlife products were shown in display cases, if we can put that up, in store windows even. And in fact, in some of the stores in Ni Khe, even openly advertised that they were selling Here, for example, is an awning. We've translated it into English, and you see it says ivory, tiger, rosewood, rhino horn. Now, many of the items they saw were worked pieces, such as these pieces of ivory, also these pieces of rhino horn. But buyers could also buy raw goods as well, including these ivory tusks stored under a bed in Ni Khe. But in addition to these physical stores, where the buyers could go and buy wildlife, you could walk in and buy wildlife products, the group of traffickers, like any good wholesaler or reseller today, offered their goods online. The investigation showed that traffickers advertised their products on places, on sites like WeChat and Facebook. So here we have rhino horn offered on WeChat. Next, we have tiger skins, again, offered online. Next, we have pangolin scales offered online, and you'll see on the bottom, we've translated a little bit about that this is 300 kilograms for 1,000 RMB per kilo. You'll see at the bottom, put the translation in somewhere. Okay, next. Again, elephant ivory, all offered online, 500 kilograms right here. So where did all this ivory and rhino horn and other parts go? Who were the traffickers selling to? Of course, we don't know the full extent of where all the trafficked products went, but the evidence suggests that the people in Ni Khe were focusing their sales on the Chinese market, and that a large portion of the illegal goods were destined for China. In fact, one of the services that many of the traffickers offered was that they would deliver the goods, just like if you bought a washing machine, you would want it delivered to your home. They would deliver the goods to the buyers in China, and that was one of the services that they offered. What about money? How did they go about getting paid? Now, having prosecuted many narcotics cases, I would have thought that the way of getting paid that they would choose would be through cash, because cash gives you anonymity. But not here. That's not what these people did. So what we see is, in fact, they would show their bank account information, they would give their bank account information to the buyers, and they weren't afraid. They were just openly allowing you to transfer money to them, and then they would deliver the goods to you. Now, one of the things we're going to see is that the nature of the trafficking in the areas around Ni Khe changed over time. When the Wildlife Justice Commission conducted its first undercover visit to Ni Khe in July of 2015, the market for wildlife products was wide open, with wildlife, as I showed you, often displayed in storefronts and in fact advertised in signs in front, in the signs in front of the buildings. In January of 2016, though, the Wildlife Justice Commission provided a version of the map of facts to the Vietnamese authorities, and there was a reaction. Things changed, at least there was some reaction. So when the investigators went back in March of this year, things had changed. Instead of a wide-open market in Ni Khe, what they saw was that the market had moved indoors, that it was now out of sight. Instead of being openly displayed, the investigators had to ask for the wildlife. But unfortunately, the upshot ultimately was the same. Things went underground, but the change was largely cosmetic. And unfortunately, the trafficking continued, all the way through five weeks ago on October 8th, when this photograph was taken. All right, so that's what I think the evidence will show, but how will it be presented to you today? After a lot of discussions, we decided to adopt a sort of trial-like format, where we'll present the evidence through testimony of four different people. Much of the evidence will be presented through Pauline Verhey, who is a senior legal investigator with the Wildlife Justice Commission. She'll walk through the various stages of the undercover investigation, showing some of the videos and the photographs taken during the operation. She'll also walk through some of the research and summary analysis that she and others with the Wildlife Justice Commission prepared. We'll also hear from Dr. Barbara Ravendil, who holds a position at the Natural Alas Biodiversity Center and teaches at the University of Leiden. She'll help us identify some of the species that the undercover operators found during the operation, and help explain, for example, why the items from Ni Khe are believed to be actual ivory or tiger parts. You'll also hear from Tom Milliken from Traffic, who's an expert in the global wildlife trade. He'll explain how the global trade works generally, and he'll also explain how Vietnam fits in within that global trade. And we'll hear from Peter Moore, who will talk about the Wildlife Justice Commission's engagement with the Vietnamese authorities over the last 18 months or so. But ladies and gentlemen, the most devastating evidence that you're going to see today comes from the words and actions of the traffickers themselves. We know what they say because the evidence is depicted in the videos and photographs and audios taken by the undercover investigators in the course of investigation. And we're going to play a number of those recordings for you throughout the day today. And I think that those recordings will provide the most direct, compelling evidence of how these traffickers went about engaging in their massive and illegal trade. Now, I mentioned a moment ago that we'll be using a trial-like format, but as the director pointed out, this is not a trial, and it's important to make that point repeatedly. We're not trying to prove this case beyond a reasonable doubt. We will not be asking a judge or a jury to find anybody guilty of anything. But instead, we're going to ask the accountability panel to listen to the evidence and to consider, in your opinion, what the next steps should be. And of course, we'll be talking about this further tomorrow and later today before the panel adjourns to deliberate. Now, one of the things we're going to hear about, as I mentioned a moment ago, is that Vietnam has engaged with the Wildlife Justice Commission in connection with the situation in Ni Khe. And as mentioned, the Wildlife Justice Commission provided a map in January, and then a second updated version of the map effect in July and August of this year. And they've also had numerous meetings with the authorities in Vietnam. Initially, the response was somewhat anemic, but there are reports of minor raids, and the main players unfortunately had stayed in operation. I think we saw that most vividly in the video that I started out with, where in October, just five weeks ago, the undercovers went to Ni Khe and saw all that ivory. But there are some hopeful signs. Two days ago, WJC, the Wildlife Justice Commission, received reports that on Saturday, law enforcement had raided one of the shops that we showed, that we'll be talking about today, and that they had seized approximately 200 kilograms of ivory. That's just two days ago. And if that's true, that's a great step. And my hope is that the public hearing will help the good, hard-working law enforcement agents in Vietnam in their fight, that this will bolster them, this will help them in their jobs. And I also hope that the people in this room and elsewhere will find ways to assist Vietnam in that fight going forward. And with that, Madam Director, I'd like to now call Pauline Verhey to come and talk. Could you introduce yourself and to the audience and tell us a little bit about what you do within the Wildlife Justice Commission?
Good morning, Mr. Asner. I'm Pauline Verhey, as you said, pronounced very good.
I worked at that.
I'm a senior legal investigator with the I'm the senior legal investigator with the Wildlife Justice Commission's investigations team. I'm the legal expert, so to speak, and one of my responsibilities is to compile the evidence that's obtained during field investigations and write it up in a map effect such as the one that we've presented to the government of Vietnam.
All right. Did there come a time that you and others at the Wildlife Justice Commission became involved in an investigation into wildlife trafficking in areas of Vietnam and China?
Yes.
All right. And generally speaking, what sort of trafficking activities were covered in that investigation?
Trafficking of ivory, rhino horn, tiger, and other protected wildlife species.
And what locations were involved?
Initially, just Niki, the village you introduced before, but later on, it expanded to other locations.
Were other people also involved in conducting the investigation in addition to you?
Yes.
And what sort of roles did these people play?
Initially, the team was quite small. We had a senior investigator who was managing the initial investigation last year. We had a case manager and a junior investigator and myself, but later on, the team expanded to more investigators. The chief of investigations came on board, and we had several other undercover investigators helping us to conduct the investigation.
And is your testimony today based in part on information and material gathered by other people?
Yes.
All right. And generally speaking, what were some of the investigative techniques that the Wildlife Justice Commission used when it went about conducting the investigation today?
A large part of the evidence was obtained through field investigations. We went there five times, but we also did a lot of research on the internet, and we conducted a lot of research on social media, such as WeChat and Facebook.
All right. So I'd like to go now before the investigation to April and June of 2015, and I want you to explain to us how it came to be that the Wildlife Justice Commission focused on Niki.
Well, while the Wildlife Justice Commission was in the process of being established, we started looking for our first investigation, and we were assessing several potential cases. And one of those included the illegal wildlife trade in Niki.
Okay. And how did you go about looking into areas to investigate? What sort of open source or other investigation did you do?
Yes, mostly internet research, as well as listening and speaking to our network.
Okay. So I'd like to now look at an exhibit that is marked as 2.01. It's going to be a video, and before we show the video, could you explain what this is and then talk us through it a little bit, and then we'll play the video?
Yes, this is a segment of a video that was placed online by investigative journalist Carl Amman. And what you see here is himself visiting the village for the first time.
Okay. And when was this video taken, to your understanding?
This was in the second half of 2012.
And is this one of the videos that the Wildlife Justice Commission focused on when it was trying to decide whether to investigate Niki and other areas around there?
Yes, correct.
If we can, let's play that video.
After leaving the shop, our guide was approached by a motorbike rider who told him about another shop in a nearby village we should go and visit. This next place was a real revelation. There were raw tusks and semi-worked items, as well as a lot of end-consumer ivory products.
It is very nice.
A group of Chinese tourists were in the process of buying a wide range of items.
Those appear to be chopsticks underneath there and bangles?
Yes.
Is that rhino?
For the first time, we were offered a prayer bracelet made from rhino horn.
All right. So that's just a snippet, but this was one of the videos that you gathered when you were deciding to go focus on Niki?
Yes.
All right. I want to focus on a couple of screenshots just from this video. If we could put up 2.02. What's depicted here?
What's depicted is the inside of the shop. On the left side, you see a group of Chinese buyers, and on the right side, sitting on the floor, is what looks to be the owner of the shop.
All right. And you see on the left side, the individual has something on his left hand. What does that appear to be?
Those appear to be ivory bangles.
And you see things on the floor, those also look like bangles?
Yes.
All right. If we could go to another screenshot of 2.03? All right. And what does this appear to be?
This appears to be that same owner of this shop, and in her hands, she's holding a number of ivory bangles, as well as what looked to be US dollar bills.
And these look like dollars. Now, this woman, does she appear elsewhere in your investigation?
Yes, we're going to actually see a lot of her during the investigation.
And I noticed there's also a display case behind there that appears to also have objects in it?
Yes.
All right. Now, as part of the initial open-source phase of the investigation, were you also able to locate articles regarding wildlife trafficking in Vietnam?
Yes, we found several articles online, in particular placed by the same investigative journalist, Mr. Carl Amman.
So if we could put up 2.04 for a moment, I'm not going to ask you to read this article to everybody, but if you could just give us a quick thumbnail of what is indicated in that?
In this article, he discusses the widespread illegal wildlife trade in Vietnam, and he also discusses what he discovered in Niki. And what's clear is that there is apparently, he documented that there was at that point in 2012, a lot of illegal trade in raw and worked ivory and rhino horn, and that there was smuggling taking place to China.
Okay. So I want to now fast-forward a little bit to July of 2015. Specifically, let's focus on July 17th of 2015. Did there come a time that the Wildlife Justice Commission sent undercover investigators to Vietnam to investigate this alleged trafficking?
Yes, this was in July last year.
Okay. So now, how many undercovers went during that first visit?
We sent two undercover investigators.
All right. Now, they're undercover, so we're not going to use their names today. Without telling me their names, can you describe generally what roles they were purporting to play?
They were posing as people from mainland China, and they were posing to be potentially interested buyers for ivory.
All right. So let's now focus specifically on the 17th. Where were the undercover operators that day?
They were in a hotel in Hanoi.
Okay. Now, did there come a time when they spoke by telephone with a woman who, an interpreter, who we're going to call Person of Interest Number 16?
Yes.
All right. And to orient the panel and the audience, the individuals who are in those 51 all have a different number assigned to them, and they will be called POI for Person of Interest 1 through 51. So this is POI 16, who is a woman who is an interpreter. All right. How did it happen that the undercover investigators came to talk to the woman known as POI 16?
Well, we received intelligence that there were a group of a number of interpreters in the area of Hanoi who were able to take Chinese visitors to places like Niki to purchase wildlife products.
Approximately how many different telephone numbers for interpreters did you have?
Around 14.
All right. And when they called up this woman, interpreter number 16, what was the pretext that they used when talking to her?
The pretext they used was that they were interested in buying hand aircrafts.
Okay. So let's, and was that conversation recorded?
Yes, it was.
Okay. So let's pull up 3.01, and if we can, before we play it, if you could just orient us a little bit to this conversation, and then we'll go ahead and play it.
Okay. This is the conversation where one of our investigators is talking to the interpreter, asking about hand aircrafts.
All right. And to orient the audience for a moment, we have at the bottom the English language translation. WJC is meant to indicate the undercover who's speaking, and then we'll also have the POI 16, and that indicates the interpreter. So let's go ahead and play this video and audio. Don Quijote is another village there?
对啊，我在河内啊。嗯，有没有那种就是象牙的珠子啊，那种。哦，对啊，我想我想看一看。
Okay. So following this telephone conversation, did there come a time that the investigators, acting in an undercover capacity, actually met this interpreter who we've called POI 16?
Yes, they met her the day after. The interpreter had rented a car and took them to Niki.
All right. And approximately how far is that drive in minutes?
It was around 40 minutes from Hanoi to Niki.
All right. And during the car ride, did they have any discussion with Person of Interest 16, the interpreter, about why she chose to take them to Niki?
Yes, they wanted to know what was so special about Niki, and she responded that other villages have potential risks of getting caught by the police, but not so in Niki.
And did she explain why it was that the police don't come to Niki?
Yeah, she said that people here have their connections.
Okay. All right. So I'd like to now focus on that day. Approximately how many premises did they see during that first day?
Approximately 25.
All right. So if we could pull up 3.02, this is a satellite photograph of Niki. Could you orient us a little bit to what these various red boxes are?
Those red boxes indicate the premises that we have visited and where we have identified persons of interest.
All right. And I noticed at the bottom here, it says Niki, and then it says PNK 1 through PNK 16. What does the code PNK stand for?
P stands for premises, and Niki stands for Niki.
Okay. So this is premises Niki 1 through premises Niki 16?
Correct.
Okay. So let me first, let me pull up 3.03, which is a video. I think it's a compilation. If, before we play it, could you just briefly orient us to what we'll see here, and then we'll go ahead and play this video?
Yeah, first we see a little video of the street in Niki, the main street where most of the shops are. And subsequently, we will see photographs taken of each or most of the shops. And as you'll see, all of these shops have display cases facing the street and containing illegal wildlife products.
Okay. So let's go ahead and play the video, and as we do so, if you could, as you see fit, narrate.
This is our interpreter. And we're now in that street.
We're now in the main street in Niki?
The main street in Niki. So that's the shop front of shop 1, shop 2. And you see these items that look like ivory carvings and bracelets.
All openly displayed?
Necklaces, yes.
This is 5 and 20?
Yes, that was later identified to be the same shop. And more what looked to be ivory products in shop 7, shop 8. And underneath, you see timber products. It's very clear that there's a mixture of timber trade and ivory and other wildlife trade going on in this village. This is interesting because here the people are seen to be processing ivory beads and making them into necklaces. And this, if you just saw that, there was a guy holding a raw tusk, more ivory, timber, ivory. And this is the inside of PNK 1, one of the key residences that we've discovered during this mission. As you see, it's quite grandly furnished. PNK 2, PNK 3, 4, so that's, well, we'll come to discuss that later, and PNK 5.
Okay. And this is all on the first day?
Yes.
Okay. So generally speaking, and we'll go through a number of these encounters during that first day in just a moment, generally speaking, what were some of the things that they observed that day?
Well, the most, the most clear impression they had was that there was, as Mr. Carl Amman had indicated, widespread illegal trades in endangered species products. It was clear that a lot of the shops were actually houses that were used as retail residences. The shopkeepers, most of them were very familiar with our interpreter, with the interpreter used by the investigators. And she also said, I know all these shops here, I helped them sell stuff. And they saw a range of products like ivory, timber, rhino horn powder, carvings and bangles, bear gall bladders, turtle bone shells, pangolin scales, and red coral. And also, they saw a lot of people from China, Chinese buyers in the streets.
So they saw other customers, and they observed that they were Chinese?
Yes.
All right. So I want to focus on a few of the shops. We're not going to go through all of the shops, because we'll be here throughout the week if we had to do that. Let's talk about PNK 1, Premises Niki 1. What did the undercover investigators observe there?
Well, they saw, as they said, it was the biggest mansion in the village, which was richly decorated. It had rosewood furniture inside, display cases containing what looked to be ivory products. There were scales there, and they were offered quite a range of ivory and rhino horn products.
And by scales, you're not talking about pangolin scales, you're talking about scales to weigh ivory or rhino horn?
Yes, yeah, correct.
All right. And did they encounter any individuals?
Yes.
Who did they encounter?
The shop owner and his wife, and the shop owner, interestingly, was nicknamed Uncle Rhino Horn.
So his nickname was Uncle Rhino Horn?
Yes.
All right. And did they also encounter any businessmen while they were there, other customers?
Yes, there was a group of businessmen from Guangxi in China who were quite chatty. They thought there was a lot of chatting going on with our investigators. They explained that they were in Niki for the first time, and they were looking to supply their wholesale shop in Zhuhai, Guangdong.
All right. And did they observe any purchases during this first visit?
No.
All right. Did they observe any conversations or engage in any conversations with the people there?
Yeah, there was a lot of conversation.
And could you walk through some of the things that they heard while they were there?
Yes. Firstly, it was clear that the female shop owner was very much in charge there. She kept on calling in for products and ringing people on the phone to bring in more products to show to the customers. She'd explained that they'd been in the rhino horn and ivory business for about a year, and that previously they were involved in rosewood trade.
Okay. So what I'd like to do now is walk through some of the photographs that were taken during the visit to PNK 1. If we could pull up 3.04, what's depicted here?
This is the inside of PNK 1.
Okay. And if we could go to 3.05, what is this?
That's a Mercedes E-series that was parked just outside this house.
And do you have a sense how much that would cost in Vietnam?
In Vietnam, depending on which type of E-series, it would cost either 1 billion Vietnamese dong or 2 billion Vietnamese dong.
And approximately, what's that in US dollars?
Sorry, I should correct. It was between 2 billion US dong, Vietnamese dong, or 3 billion Vietnamese dong. And US dollars, that is 90,000 US dollars or 135 US dollars.
All right. And approximately, what's the average income in Vietnam?
That's approximately 210 US dollars per month.
So let's go to 3.06. What's depicted here?
This is the group of Chinese people from Guangxi, and to the left, you see the owner of the house holding what looked to be ivory bangles.
Okay. So just so everybody's clear, the faces are blurred out. Why was that done?
That's for privacy reasons, and also because we don't want to jeopardize a potential criminal investigation by the Vietnamese authorities.
Okay. And what appears to be held in this person's hand?
That appears to be an ivory bangle.
All right. If we could go to 3.07, what does this appear to be?
These are several raw ivory parts that were offered for sale to our investigators, placed on a scale.
Okay. And if we could, and this is all in PNK 1 on the very first day that they went there?
Yes.
All right. If we could pull up 3.08, which is a video, and before we play the video, if you could just orient us a little bit to what we expect to see?
Yes, here we're going to see, this is still in that same mansion, PNK 1. We see the Chinese buyer sitting around the table here, and what you will see is that a rhino horn is brought in.
All right. And again, to orient everybody, WJC, that's the undercover, and then what we'll see is the other indications of POI X, Y, and Z. These are the various individuals who we have identified by number as Persons of Interest 1 through 51. Let's go ahead and play this. That's the rhino horn?
Yes, just brought in by the lady of the house. They're now going to weigh it. They're now going to weigh it.
2.5 kilograms?
Yes.
Approximately, how much is that in dollars?
She's going to tell us.
So you need about two or three of those to buy the Mercedes?
Correct.
All right, let's pull up 3.09. What is this?
This is a profile, WeChat profile page of that same female owner of that house that we saw before.
Now, how is it that the investigators got this WeChat profile page?
Well, typically during this investigation, we discovered that most of these people have WeChat, and if our investigators would visit a trader, they would exchange WeChat details and connect to each other on WeChat in order to facilitate discussions about illegal wildlife.
All right, and for the Luddites like me and the audience, actually, can you tell us what WeChat is?
Oh, WeChat is a Chinese messaging app, much similar to WhatsApp in the rest of the world.
Okay, and then let's focus on some of the goods here. I see four photographs with, right next to the word "album." Can you walk us through what you saw with respect to, in those photographs?
The first two on the left are videos, but the third one is of interest because those are what look to be ivory products.
It looks like carved ivory products?
Yes.
All right, let's go to 3.10.
This is a profile page of her husband. And again, we blurred out details here in order for privacy purposes.
And how did we receive this?
In that same house, on the same day.
And could you walk us through some of the photographs of things you see?
Here again, on the left you see a photo of what looked to be ivory rings or bangles.
All right, and if we could now look at 3.11? All right, and what is depicted here? It looks like a photograph of a cellphone.
Yes.
And things are blurred out. How did we get this, and can you explain what it is, and especially, what's been blurred out?
We got this after our investigators were in a dialogue with the owner, the two owners of the house about potentially buying those ivory products we saw on a scale before. And they explained that if our investigators would be interested to buy those items, they would have to make a payment into their bank account in China.
Okay, so they're not asking for cash?
No.
They're going to directly deposit into their bank account, and then after they're deposited, then the goods are delivered?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so let's go to the next premises. Again, we're not going to go through all the premises, but we're going to spend more time on this first trip, and then probably go a little bit quicker through the subsequent field missions, just so people have a sense of both the techniques and the things that we see. A lot of it will end up being somewhat repetitious, and so we'll move faster as we go. All right, so if we can go to PNK2, I believe we have a map here, and PNK2 is down here. All right, could you describe the premises that they encountered when they went to PNK2?
Yes, again, it was a house, and inside the house was more rosewood furniture. And they found two, a group of individuals there, two unidentified females, an unidentified man, and another man who later introduced himself as the manager of the shop.
Okay, so let's go to 3.13. All right, so what is depicted here?
This is the inside of PNK2.
All right, I noticed that there is a staircase over here?
Yes.
And then a table over here?
Mm-hmm.
And then it looks like there are a couple of large bags underneath the staircase?
Yes.
And I see a green bin or basket. Okay, so can you describe, actually, let's go to 3.14. All right, what appears in this photograph?
Here again, you see that green basket, and inside you see white pieces covered in black paint. And the owner of the shop explained to us that those were ivory, ivory, products of ivory with paint, covered in paint.
And I notice also, there's a red bin that we couldn't see when we walked in, but it appears also to contain pieces of ivory that have been painted black.
Yes.
Now, what was the explanation for the fact that the ivory had black paint on it?
He explained that ivory was painted black to facilitate smuggling from Africa.
Now, from your work in this area, are you familiar with some of the ways that traffickers disguise ivory when smuggling it across borders?
Yes, there are several means of disguising ivory when it's smuggled across, and those include painting them black, but there's also, for example, there's been a case where ivory was disguised as chocolate pieces, so traffickers are quite creative.
So let's pull up 3.15. We're leaving Niki just for a moment, but we'll be back. What's depicted in this photograph?
These are pieces of ivory tusks that were seized in February 2015 in Hong Kong. It came from Nigeria, and it was detected by sniffer dogs.
Sniffer dogs, and again, we see that this is painted black.
Yes.
Did the proprietors of PNK2 know where, within Africa, the ivory had come from?
Well, they did not indicate that in you, but they said, "As long as the quality is good."
And did they talk any about their business, where they supply ivory to?
Yes, they did. They said they were able to supply to China, including to Shanghai and Beijing. There was also discussion about different prices of rhino horn and ivory. And he also explained that he has a shop in Dongqing in China, just across the border from Monkai, which is managed by his younger female cousin.
Okay, so, and I believe that's somebody that we'll encounter later in the presentation today?
Yes.
All right, if we could pull up 3.16, what is that?
This is once again a WeChat profile page for this individual, Person of Interest number 3.
Okay, and what appears to be depicted in the photographs there?
Those appear to be timber beads or bracelets.
Were there any discussions with these proprietors that they encountered at PNK2 about how they would accept payment for the various goods that they were offering?
Yes, they, like the people in PNK1, indicated they have bank accounts at the Bank of China, and they would accept payment within those bank accounts and would then organize the smuggling into China.
Now, was there any discussion about what would happen if they got caught doing all of this trade?
Yes, Person of Interest number 3 indicated that they would take full responsibility. So if there was a seizure or some sort of intervention, they would make sure that the customer was compensated.
And you mentioned earlier that they said that they were connected with a place in China, was that in Dongqing?
Dongqing.
And did they provide any information so that we could encounter or deal with the person up in Dongqing?
Yes, they gave the phone number for their younger female cousin.
Okay, so I'd like to go to PNK3 now. If we could pull up our map. PNK3 is down here. So tell us who they encountered when they went to PNK3?
There was a group of males and females there, and one of them identified themselves. He's now our Person of Interest number 4. There wasn't actually a lot of discussion about buying anything, but during our visit, during the visit of our investigators in that shop, someone came from outside into the shop and brought out a piece of rhino horn.
So he just walked into the shop with a piece of rhino horn?
Yes.
Presumably to sell it to them?
Yeah, our interpreter later on, later explained that that guy had come in to sell that rhino horn to the shop owner.
Was there any discussion about their business, what sort of products were available, or also how they went about shipping things and where they shipped it to?
Yeah, they explained that they had all kinds of products available, and they were able to ship to Shanghai, Hong Kong as well, but only for large quantities. They said they had rhino horn in stock, but there was no discussion about prices.
And what about processing, taking ivory and working it? Was there any activity in that regard in this premises?
Yes, there was equipment in the shop which looked to be used for processing ivory beads.
All right, so now I want to go to another location, PNK4, and we're going to see a lot about PNK4 today. If you could, let's pull up 3.21. What's this?
This is the outside of the shop that we identified as PNK4. Blurred is the name of the shop, and as you see, the shutters are closed, so the shop appears to be closed.
All right, so let's go to 3.22.
This is just next to that shop front, and this is the entrance to the courtyard of the house that's behind the shop.
So in other words, you didn't go in the front with this particular one, you had to go through the courtyard?
Yes.
All right, so now I want to pull up 3.24. What's depicted here?
We're inside the shop right now. You see the shutters from the outside, and depicted here is the owner of the shop behind her counter.
Okay, so let me just orient us a little bit. Up top here, it looks like we have pieces of ivory?
Yes.
All right, and then over here, that looks like a scale on the left?
Correct.
All right, and then below, it's a little hard to see in this photograph, but it appears that there's another scale here?
Yes.
And the scale in the counter, is that one that would be used for different types of goods than the one on the counter?
Yes, the one below the counter is used for measuring the weight of very precious commodities like rhino horn bracelets, because they are so expensive.
Right, and the one on top?
And those are more exact, so they measure the weight more exact than the one on top.
Okay, and the one on top could be used for what sort of goods?
For ivory tusks, for example.
Right, and we can see in the counter, it appears, and we'll look at this a little closer, other items are in the counter.
Yes.
All right, I want to focus for a moment on this woman. Let's pull up 3.25. All right, on the left, we have the photograph that we just looked at. What is the photograph on the right?
That's the same screen grab from Mr. Carl LeMans' video that we saw earlier.
And does this appear to be the same woman?
Yes.
So she was trafficking in 2012, and then we encountered her in July of 2015?
Yes.
All right, and this woman, did she speak just Vietnamese, or did she also speak Chinese?
She spoke mostly Vietnamese, but she was able to speak Chinese where it came to the products she was advertising as well as prices.
Okay, so I'd like to now focus on some of the things that they observed, some of the products that they observed in PNK4. Let's go to 3.26. All right, so if you could walk us through what we're seeing here?
Yes, again, we see the display, the counter with the display case underneath. You see a range of products that look to be made of ivory, including figurines and bangles, bracelets and necklaces. On the top of the counter, you see three ivory figurines made from ivory tusk tips.
These are the tips of the tusk?
Yes.
And those are carved in, okay?
Yes.
And then what's over to the right?
Those appear to be two tips of rhino horn.
Okay, all right, and what conversation, if any, did the undercovers have with this woman, who I think we identified as Person of Interest number 5?
Right, that's correct. Well, interestingly, she said that they'd had hundreds of kilos of processed ivory, but had just sold out that morning. There was also discussion about prices and also about delivery of those items that investigators might be interested to purchase into China.
And where were some of the locations that she could deliver goods if there was a willing buyer?
She said she could deliver to Pingjiang and Fujian.
And what about paying for the transportation costs? How was that handled?
Well, firstly, the transportation costs would depend on the purchase size, but all of it was, would be done through a transfer of money into a bank account.
Okay, I want to now focus on 3.27, which is a video. If you could, we'll play the video in a moment, but if you could orient us about what we expect to see, and then we'll go ahead and play the video.
This is a video of some of the ivory products that we observed for sale in PNK4 on that day.
All right, if we could go ahead and play that video.
This is a side room next to that shop room.
It looks like they're pulling things out from underneath the bed?
Yeah, this is our interpreter pulling out an ivory tusk from under the bed, and there were six in total.
Underneath the bed?
Yeah.
All right, now let me focus on 3.28, which is another video. If you could orient us with respect to that video, and then we'll go ahead and play it.
Yes, in this video, Person of Interest number 5 is going to explain how the smuggling is conducted into China.
Okay, so that's Person of Interest number 5, who we saw originally in Carl LeMans' video back in 2012, and we had a still photograph of her a moment ago. So POI-05, Person of Interest 5, is talking with the interpreter. Let's proceed.
I should just add that she's wearing a blue shirt now because it's the day after.
Oh, so they went back on both, both the 18th and the 19th of July?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
That's a Chinese border town just across from Friendship Pass, which is in...
So she could take things over there?
Yes.
So you don't have to worry about getting it over the border yourself, she'll deliver it?
Yeah.
And they're talking about the border gates at this point?
Yes.
All right, let's pull up 3.30. What does this appear to be?
This is a WeChat profile page of this Person of Interest number 5.
Okay, and what appears in the photographs?
Those appear to be rhino horn cups and some bangles.
Let's pull up 3.31. What does this appear to be?
Well, again, blurred out, but here she provided three Chinese bank accounts with the Industrial and Commercial Bank of China, the China Construction Bank, and the Agricultural Bank of China.
All right, and then if we could actually just zero in on that, I guess that's 3.32. These appear to be the banks that we're talking about?
Yes, correct.
Bank account numbers? She provides this, and the plan is that you wire money to her, and she delivers the goods, including across the border into China?
Yeah, and actually, those bank accounts are not in her name, so they're in the name of another person, and quite clearly, there is a specialized role in that criminal network where individuals organize the whole smuggling aspect of the trafficking.
All right, let's take a quick look at our map for a moment. We're now going to go briefly to PNK5, and I know that we go back there, so I'm not going to dwell on that, but that was also one of the premises that was visited that day.
Yes.
All right, I want to now talk, in the course of the day, were there a series of conversations that took place with other individuals?
Yes.
All right, let's pull up 3.33, which I think is a video of discussions with Chinese businessmen. So if you could orient us about what this is, and then we'll walk through the video.
3.33?
Am I on the wrong one?
No, that could be right, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
This video includes a discussion with one Chinese buyer who explains why Chinese people now come to Vietnam to purchase wildlife products.
Can we play this one?
No, 3.33.
Ah, okay, these are various shops.
Okay, so, yeah, sorry, I was confused here. These are several Chinese individuals that we encountered in that village on that day.
He's talking about what, transporting from Africa?
Yeah, there's discussion generally about transportation from Africa to China, and he's explaining that it's very difficult now to get ivory into China.
And so it's more convenient to go through Vietnam at this junction?
Yes. That's actually our investigator, that's just making conversation.
Okay, so one more video here. Let's pull up 3.35. Was there a discussion, well, why don't you walk us through this discussion that happens in this video?
Yeah, firstly, this is a part of a video where our investigators are on the route, on the road to Niki together with the interpreter, and this is where they're discussing what's so special about Niki. And the second part of the video shows the same Chinese buyer we saw before, also talking about element of corruption.
Okay, so if we could go ahead and play this video? Okay, so if we could go ahead and play this video. This appears to be PNK4, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
That's another buyer, a Chinese buyer?
Yes. Again, discussing that China is respecting so strictly now.
So China's cracking down?
Yes, correct.
Now, in the course of the day, I presume that they had a number of conversations with the interpreter, who we've called POI16. Among other things, what was discussed with her while they were walking their way through Niki about how the shops ship into China?
She said that the big shops can ship the products to China, and that's what the investigators learned as well, in these five premises that we visited.
So the bigger shops could go ahead and make the shipments into China? All right, so, and total, how many shops did they visit on the first field visit?
In this first field visit, they visited 25 shops.
Okay, and we only looked at a few of them for the purposes of this presentation?
Yes.
I'd like to jump forward then to September, in particular, the 24th of September. Did there come a time that the Wildlife Justice Commission sent undercover investigators back to Vietnam to investigate the alleged trafficking?
Yes, we sent one investigator.
All right, was it the same investigator or different investigator?
It was a different investigator, it was actually a Western investigator posing as an interested buyer for some jewelry for his girlfriend.
Okay, so it was a Caucasian this time?
Yes.
All right, if we could pull up our map, 4.01. There we go. And which premises did they visit this time?
They went to premises PNK6, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 11, and they also visited PNK5, which had been identified in July that year.
Okay, so 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 11, and then they went back to PNK5, which is here. Now, who selected these particular locations to go to?
No one selected them. It was just a matter of going there and seeing what was on sale.
Did the interpreter select them, or did they just walk the streets?
Oh, right, yes. Well, the interpreter would bring them there, but in this case, there wasn't an interpreter, actually.
There was no interpreter for this one? They just went to the streets and walked in?
Yes.
And being a Westerner, they could walk in and observe some of the things we're about to show?
Yes, quite remarkable, actually.
So let's take a look at them. We're going to run through a series of photographs. I'm not going to dwell too much, but if you could just orient us as we run through the photographs, and tell us what is seen there. Let's go to 4.03. All right, so what is depicted here that this investigator observed?
Yes, this is a display case at PNK7, and inside of this display case are what appear to be ivory bangles and bracelets.
So let's go to 4.05.
This is the display case outside PNK8, and once again, these appear to be ivory carvings, bracelets, and necklaces.
Let's go to 4.09.
This is a Chinese buyer who was encountered at PNK5, and in his hands, he's holding a caliper, which he was using to measure ivory beads that were being processed in that shop.
So that's a caliper up there?
Yes.
Okay. Let's go to 4.11. What appears here?
This is a display case outside PNK9, or inside, actually, on the street side. And inside are numerous items that appear to be made of ivory.
When you say on the street side, is this something that would have been visible from the street looking in?
Yes.
And all of this is just openly displayed on the street?
Yes.
So let's go to the next one, which I think is 13.
Yeah, these are ivory products offered for sale at PNK10, so bangles in different sizes and necklaces.
Let's go to 4.14. What does this appear to be?
This is a display case at PNK10. You see a scale here, and on the scale, you see some pieces of offcut of rhino horn, as we've come to call them.
So just so everybody can see, it looks like there's a display case, this is a glass top. Through that, we see what appear to be necklaces and bangles, and those appear to be made out of ivory?
Yes.
And then on top of it, there's a scale, and you say that it appears to be two pieces of rhino horn on top of that?
Yes, and they were advertised as rhino horn.
And if we could go to 4.15? What does this appear to be?
This is a display case in PNK6. And inside, again, you see several items that appear to be made of ivory, including a tusk tip, carved tusk tip.
And if we could go to 4.16? What does this appear to be?
These appear to be bags filled with pangolin scales, as well as one tooth that appears to be from a tiger, and ivory products for sale at PNK6.
So the bags appear to be the pangolin scales, it looks like you have ivory carvings up on the upper right corner, and then you say that that appears to be a tiger tooth?
Yes.
All right, and if we go to 4.20? What does this appear to be?
This is a WeChat profile page again of a Person of Interest we encountered during that field mission, Person of Interest Number Seven.
And what appears in this photograph at the top?
That appears to be a timber statue with two, what appear to be ivory tusks coming out of it.
All right, and then let's go to 4.21. And this looks like a display case again. You can see in the reflection that it looks like we're out on the street?
Yes.
Okay, and if you could tell us what's depicted in this display case, as far as you can tell?
This display case was observed at PNK11, and inside, on the top shelf, you see several items that appear to be made of ivory. And down below, those appear to be made of several types of timber products.
Okay, and it looks like at the very bottom, what does that appear to be?
I think that those look like incense cones.
Okay. And each of these photographs were taken during the second field visit in Niki?
Yes.
All right, so now let's go to the third field visit, and we're talking about now October of 2015. Did there come a time that the investigative team went back to Niki?
Actually, this time, we didn't go to Niki. We went to Mokai in Dongqing, because we were interested to find out more about the smuggling going on between Vietnam and China.
Okay, so let's just take a moment to orient ourselves. We pulled up map number, we've marked 5.01. I see at the bottom, we've got Hanoi, and then the red balloon is Niki.
Yes.
All right, and then we go up north, you see the Friendship Pass, and then really northeast, we see two towns, one is Mokai, and then the other is Dongqing.
Yes, correct.
And is Mokai on the Vietnamese side?
Yes.
And Dongqing is on the Chinese side? Okay, so if you could walk us through what was, why it was that we went? Let's focus first on October 2nd, who they encountered, and how it was that they ended up with this person?
Well, one of the objectives, as I said, for this field mission was to understand more about the smuggling going on, but it was also to visit that shop that was mentioned during the first field mission in July 2015, where Person of Interest Number Three explained that he had a shop in Dongqing as well, managed by his younger female cousin. And we really wanted to meet her and understand more about her involvement in the trade.
And did the investigators actually meet this woman?
Yes.
By the way, I should make clear, were these the same undercover investigators with the first field mission, or were they different?
They were different.
And who were they posing as?
They were posing as Chinese buyers from China.
Now, the woman that they encountered, the younger cousin, was she given a number?
Yes, her number is Person of Interest Number 28.
All right, and were there discussions with this woman about her life and her business?
Yes, she explained to our investigators that she had lived in Mokai for 16 years, that she ran an agri wood shop in Dongqing, across the border, together with her niece. And she spent quite a lot of time explaining how she sources products, ivory products, from Niki.
All right, so we pulled up Exhibit 5.02, which is going to be a video again. Before we play the video, could you just walk us through what we expect to see?
Yes, in this video, you see Person of Interest Number 28 explaining her connection with Niki, and also how she sources her products from Niki.
Okay, and where are they sitting?
They're sitting in a restaurant.
All right, and this is in which side, on the Vietnamese side or on the Chinese side?
I believe this was on the Chinese side.
Okay, so if we could go ahead and play this video. She's talking about crossing the border every day.
Yes.
And she sleeps in Vietnam at night?
Yeah, that's where her home is.
She comes in the morning and then goes back?
Yep.
Referring to the individual we met earlier?
Uh huh.
POI3 is her older cousin?
Yes, in base in Niki.
We're talking about delivering within China?
Yes.
So they bring the goods from Niki up to Dongqing, and then they mail it out from there within China?
Correct.
All right, did there come a time that the investigators went with her to visit her premises?
Well, initially, on the first day, they visited her shop in Dongqing, and yes, on the second day, they went to her home in Vietnam.
All right, so let's pull up 5.05. All right, and this is a video, it's going to be a little jarring, but it's before lunch. I mean, jarring in the sense that it actually shakes. Not that it's ugly, although it is that too. If you could walk us through what we expect to see here?
Yes, this is still in Dongqing in China, and she's explaining here that she can deliver anything customers like into China. She's also going to show a few ivory items that she has in the shop, and she's also going to explain how they can cross the river illegally by boat.
Okay, so she's going to walk through, show items, and also talk about how she actually gets things across the border?
Yes.
All right, so let's go ahead and play this video. It's not too bad. And who is that individual?
This is Person of Interest Number 28. This is inside of her shop.
And that's the younger cousin?
I don't know.
So they're taking her upstairs, taking the investigators upstairs?
Yes. She's also going to explain at some point that she's very nervous about having anything in China because of the inspections. So this is the only stuff she has upstairs in her shop.
And these appear to be ivory products?
Yes.
But she says there are more in Vietnam?
Yeah.
She's got everything there, she said, beads, necklaces, et cetera.
Uh huh.
And Mokai isn't Vietnam?
Yes.
Talking about taking a boat across the river between Vietnam and China?
Yes.
That talks about 200 RMB for return?
Just to be clear, that's not the legal way of crossing the river.
Right.
Yeah.
This is not with a visa?
No, exactly.
All right, did they have a discussion about meeting the next day?
Yes.
All right, so let's go to the next day. Where did they meet?
They met in her home in Mokai.
Okay, in the Vietnamese side?
Yes.
All right, so let's pull up 5.06. And before we play that video, if you could orient us to what's depicted here?
Yes, what's depicted here is a discussion our investigators had with her in her home in Mokai, where she's showing them some ivory products, and she's also discussing about how government controls have become very strict in China, and it's quite difficult to get products right now. And she's also explaining how she gets goods in from Niki.
Okay, and so the woman in the yellow shirt, who is that?
That's Person of Interest Number 28.
Okay, and then who appears to be, you can actually see them, but you see the left hand coming down and touching some of the items?
That's one of our investigators.
All right, so if we could play this video? They're talking about the Chinese government cracking down?
Yes.
It's showing necklaces, it looks like?
Yes. And lucky buckles, as they're called.
Lucky buckles?
Yes.
She's talking about where she imports them from? She gets them from Saigon, Ho Chi Minh City?
Yeah, Ho Chi Minh City.
And then they're brought up to the border?
No, they're brought up to Niki. And so the raw product comes from Saigon, as she explains, and it's processed in Niki, and then brought over.
And there's a boss from Fujian?
Yes.
So the raw material comes over from Africa to Saigon?
Yeah.
According to her?
Uh huh.
So it's getting more difficult this year, she claims?
Yes.
All right, so in the course of this, was there any discussion about actually doing the smuggling itself? Getting the goods across?
Yes.
All right, and we'll pull up 5.07, which is a video. But if you could, before we play this video, set the scene for us. It looks like this is our woman in the yellow shirt. And describe the conversation, set the scene, and what we expect to see in this video.
Okay, so here again is Person of Interest Number 28, explaining that she has a person who can help her get goods across from Mokai to Dongqing, as well as people.
Okay, so why don't we go ahead and play that video? Is it talking about she is the woman who smuggles people across?
Yes.
You have to pay the money, of course, to get across?
Uh huh.
So they're experienced in getting people across the border?
Yeah, specialized business.
And the woman she is the person who smuggles the people across and goods across? So they wait for the police not to be there and then they bring them across?
Yeah, they wait for the Chinese police not to be there.
So there's not just the woman, but there are another woman who can do it too?
Several people she uses for that, yeah.
And then a few hours later, what happens?
A few hours later, our investigators went on a trip like that, a boat trip.
So we're going to see them actually crossing the border right here?
Yes, they're going to cross the border from Mokai to Dongxing. So there you see China.
So it looks, what, about twenty meters across?
Yeah, very short boat ride.
Very bad with distances. This is one of the boats that they're getting onto?
Correct.
And right now, we're in Vietnam and across the river, that's China?
Yes.
And it appears that there's some structures there, tent-like structures there, what are those?
Those are restaurants lining the riverfront in China.
Looks like they're coming across another boat there?
Yeah, that border is also moored on the Chinese side, so that just now landed.
So we're now landing on China?
Yes.
They just simply get out in broad daylight?
Yeah.
It does look like there's some barbed wire?
Yeah, but it's not enough to keep them outside, as you will see. It's very easy to get into China here.
If you have the upper body strength of that guy, it is?
Yeah. Some other people need help here.
And now they're in China?
Yes.
Alright, did there come a time that the investigators shared a meal with this individual? This woman, Person of Interest number twenty-eight, who just, to remind everybody, was the younger cousin of an individual that we met in Niki?
Yes.
Alright, did they share a meal with her?
Yes, they had lunch with her.
And in summary, can you tell us what are some of the things that were discussed during that meal?
Yeah, during this meal, she discussed how it's possible that people in Niki conduct this illegal trade so easily. So she's going to discuss the corruption in the context of the trade in Niki.
Okay, so if we could go ahead and play that video. So they're not displaying it there, but in Niki, they're all happy to display it?
Yeah, as we've seen as well.
And they charge money? Is that just, are they, she's talking about bribery?
Yes, I would think so.
Okay. So at this point, we've gotten up to October of two thousand and fifteen. And these are the first three field visits. I'd like to now focus on some of the hard work, the less glamorous work, the analysis and internet research that was done. First, I know that there were a lot of photographs that were taken in connection with these first three field visits. Let's take a few of them to get a better understanding of the nature of the trafficking that took place in Niki. So I want to focus first on marketing. Let's go to six point zero one point one. Alright, now, I want to focus in first on the sign on the right of this shop. And it appears there's a shop and there's a display, and this is an open street in Niki. So if we could pull up the English translation of a number of these, and that's six point oh one point two. And we see that openly in Chinese, it appears to be advertised as ivory, aggarwood, and rosewood.
Yes.
Alright, if we could go to six point oh two point one. We have a yellow awning here, it's a little tough to see, but it looks like a number of Chinese characters. And we've had that translated as well. If you could tell us what those characters depict?
As you can see, they depict several products, including ivory, aggarwood, tiger, rosewood, and rhino horn.
Okay, now, in the course of your investigation, did you also make efforts to analyze some of the telephone numbers that you were able to gather from the photographs?
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, what we did here was using the video footage that was taken in July during the first field mission. We took screen grabs to understand what, as here, like in this case, what was being advertised in all of these shops. And we also looked at phone numbers that we found on the awnings of these shops in order to possibly identify other individuals also involved that we hadn't identified before during the field missions.
And approximately, without holding you to it, approximately, how many photographs did you end up looking at?
A lot.
A lot, okay, that's a good approximation. So actually, let's focus on one or two of them, let's go to six point oh three. Now, I notice in this photograph, some things have been blacked out. Was that done by the Wildlife Justice Commission?
Yes, this was done for the purpose of this public hearing.
Alright, and so it's blacked out to conceal the rest of the number?
Yes.
But you have access to the full number, is that correct?
That's correct.
Alright, I want to focus on the one that says nine oh five at the end. And this is on an awning, open to the street, correct?
Correct.
Alright, so what research, if any, did the investigation conduct with respect to that particular phone number?
We used a WeChat application to see whether this phone number was a known number in WeChat. And indeed it was, so we connected with this phone number using the WeChat app.
Okay, and if we could pull up six point oh four? We see that number listed here.
Yes.
Alright, and this WeChat number, I'm sorry, this WeChat account is assigned to which person of interest?
That's Person of Interest number twenty-three.
Alright, and can you tell us effectively what that person ends up doing?
Well, we discovered that she was using WeChat to advertise illegal wildlife products.
Okay, and then let's pull up six point oh five. What's depicted here?
This is another WeChat profile page of another individual, namely Person of Interest number seventeen, who was referred to us by Person of Interest number five.
And just to remind everybody, Person of Interest number five, where did we first see her?
In the video made by Carl Aman in two thousand and twelve.
Okay, and then we saw her again in two thousand and fifteen during the first field visit?
Yes, correct.
And her premises, we've called that one P N K four, is that right?
That's right.
Alright, you mentioned WeChat. And frankly, before we started working on this, I'd never heard of WeChat. But it appears to play a prominent role among this group of traffickers. Could you describe the research that the Wildlife Justice Commission did in order to investigate their activities on WeChat?
Yes, for each of the individuals that we identified and that we had phone numbers for, we would look up those phone numbers in WeChat, and if they were connected to WeChat accounts, we would connect with them in order to understand if they were using WeChat to conduct illegal wildlife trade.
Okay, so let's pull up six point oh three, I'm sorry, six point oh six, which I believe is a compilation of WeChat chats. And if you could walk us through what is depicted here?
Yeah, before we start, I would like to say that these are images, yeah, images advertised by this same Person of Interest number seventeen, who is actually an interpreter. But we came to understand that she is also heavily involved in advertising wildlife products, and she explained that she was doing that for her friends.
Okay, so this is essentially her WeChat profile. It's a video walking through her WeChat page, showing things from June twelfth to nine of November of two thousand and fifteen. And then we've added subtitles onto this so that you could see the English translation from the Mandarin. So why don't we go ahead and play this?
Here's a rhino horn on a scale.
What are these?
Five bear bale bladders, dried bear bale bladders.
What's that?
That appears to be a rhino horn cup. And once again, a rhino horn on a scale. Those appear to be ivory chopsticks. And more rhino horn, slices of rhino horn. Ivory bengals. And as you can see by her language, she's very clearly advertising and trying to sell these items to a Chinese audience because it's all in Mandarin.
It's all in Mandarin, right?
Yeah.
Looks like tiger teeth?
Yes.
There's a caliper behind it?
Yeah.
What is that?
Those appear to be rhino horn offcuts. So actually, the rest product of the processing of rhino horn products. More rhinohorns.
That's what?
It's advertised as dried tiger testicles. And rhino again. This person is making a lot of money on WeChat. So just the rhino horn she advertised amounts up to over one point six million US dollars. But in total, in the one year that we monitored her illegal trade, she trafficked over two point one million US dollars in illegal wildlife products.
Okay. So let's go to, if this one's done, let's go to six point oh three. I'm sorry, six point oh seven. Before we play this video, can you walk us through what's to be expected when we go through this?
Yes, this is an audio conversation we had with another subject, Person of Interest number thirty-one, who was identified quite late in that first part of our investigation, namely in December. And he was quite informative about how he smuggles ivory products into China and how the financial aspects of that are organized.
Okay, so let's go ahead and play this video.
I'm going to send it to Fujian in China.
Yes.
Ivory beads?
Yes.
More beads?
I just saw your friend post hawthorn, how much is a kilogram?
I have a Chinese account. This is not me, this is the seller.
Tiger bones in a bucket?
Alright, and these various photographs, these were all on his WeChat page?
Yeah, these are actually images that he shared during that audio conversation.
During the conversation?
Yes, and what we did for him, as well as for the other subjects that we identified to be active on WeChat, we documented all of his illegal trade. And over the one year that we monitored him, he was trafficking over six point five million US dollars in illegal wildlife products.
Okay, so we have two more videos to show before the break.
Just allow me perhaps to interject briefly to say, as we do get closer to our first break, perhaps I can ask you to find a good moment in your presentation to pause and allow the panel members to ask any questions they may have about the evidence they've heard so far?
Absolutely, so we have about, just to orient everybody, we're getting near to the lunch hour. We have two more videos to show that'll be relatively short. And then what we'll do is we'll open it up to questions, both from the director and the panel. And then we'll take our lunch break. Alright, I'd like to now show six point oh seven. Can you orient us with what this is?
Six point oh seven?
Did I just play that one?
We just did that, yeah.
Okay, so I only have one more. Six point oh eight then.
Yeah, what we're doing here, this is an illustration of the Facebook account of another Person of Interest number twenty-seven, who we also identified in that stage of the investigation. And we discovered that this person is particularly active on Facebook, advertising quite significant quantities of ivory, mostly ivory products, as well as raw products. And what we're doing here, we're taking you as a sort of, this is a navigation through his Facebook page.
Okay, so let's go ahead and play that, and if you could walk us through it as we go, narrate as we go.
Yeah. So here, it starts with an auction of an elephant bone bracelet with just one ivory bead in it. And what I mean by auction, he's actually opening up an auction for interested buyers. If you scroll down, you're going to see that people are starting to bid. One hundred thousand Vietnamese dong, seven hundred thousand Vietnamese dong, going down. And then there's someone who wins the bid for a seven hundred fifty thousand Vietnamese dong. So this is for an elephant bone bracelet. This is another Facebook post where he's posting raw ivory tusks, placing on a scale to indicate the weight. More ivory tusks. Six ivory tusks.
And this is a video of him just navigating it, one of the investigators navigating the page as a way of demonstrating what's there?
Yeah, and it's really just a selection of everything we've seen, he was quite prolific. These look to be ivory carvings and more ivory carvings. And this is just openly on Facebook.
Alright, and this is something that presumably you could get today?
Yes. And as this is on Facebook, we're also assuming that with this, he's targeting more of a Vietnamese or Southeast Asian audience, since there's no Facebook available in China. And once again, for this person, we documented all of the images that he advertised and estimate that in one year, he advertised a total amount of almost seven hundred thousand US dollars in ivory, as well as other wildlife products.
Okay, thank you. So I guess what we'd like to do now is, we're getting right near the lunch break, just so folks understand what will happen next, is the director and the panel can ask some questions of Ms. Verhe. Her testimony is not done. We'll pick up with her after lunch as well. We'll probably break in and talk with Barbara, I'm going to pronounce, my Dutch is getting better, but still very bad. Ravendel, how was that? And then also Tom Milliken, who will be talking about trafficking generally. But for right now, I'll ask if the director or the panel have any questions for Mr. Ms. Verhe. If we can focus on at least the evidence that has been presented so far to try and elucidate that a little bit.
Before I come to panel members, or would you, would any of you have a question? Would any of you have a question? Yes, please, let's start with you, Mr. Sayan.
Thank you, this is automatic? Well, thank you very much for the presentation. Really gives a lot of details that we had already seen in the map of facts, but here in this, in the videos are fantastic. Many elements have been mentioned, interpreters, bank accounts, and so on. But the component of corruption has been only very loosely mentioned. It is possible that something will be elaborated about corruption in the different phases, in the source, in what we have seen in Vietnam, or eventually in crossing the border because some mention has been to bribing authorities. But some more complexities have been found regarding corruption, that's the main question.
I think at this point, the evidence has shown that there were discussions about-- with the various individuals. For example, the younger cousin talked about how you could bribe officials to get across the border, to essentially look the other way, either to cross the border through legitimate routes or through the-- or through-- to look the other way while they're crossing the river. I think one of the earlier subjects in one of the videos talked a little bit about why it is-- the interpreter, the first interpreter, 16, why it is that they chose Ni K versus other locations because they're-- at least the suggestion-- nobody ever says we're bribing people, but the suggestion is that it's safe because people are being paid. Ms. Verhe, did you-- and obviously, we'll see more as the day goes on. But Ms. Verhe, anything else also spring to your mind of the evidence we've seen so far about corruption?
Well, I think you summarized that quite clearly. It's correct that we don't have actual evidence of corruption. We've just had people talking about how there's bribery taking place. So I would say, yeah, I would summarize those as there being indications, quite strong indications, as we'll see later on as well, that there's others discussing this issue.
One thing that you won't see in the course of the investigation is the investigators actually having discussions with government officials and paying bribes. We did not do that. It was all focused on posing as buyers. And really, the way it seems to operate from the evidence we've seen is that the sellers themselves were buying protection and access to routes through corruption. Of course, we didn't necessarily have transparency into them actually doing it. But certainly, the fact that it's all so open and the fact that they're so easily able to get it across the border certainly does suggest that corruption might have been involved.
And also, just to follow up on this point and the point raised by Mr. Sayan, I think what struck me, looking at one of the videos, is just how easy it was for traders to cross that very short border, to cross essentially the river. And what also struck us, I believe, is the lack of presence of customs officers. I mean, do we conclude that they were, for the most part, simply not there? In addition to the fact that they were easy to bribe? A question for Pauline Verhe. And just also on the online trafficking trade aspect of it. So much of it happens, as you say, on WeChat, which is a China-based social website. I wondered during the course of your 12-month investigation, to what extent did you notice? How much was there an indication that the authorities were actually cracking down on some of these traders and shutting down some of these accounts, which are there for everyone to see, given the fact that the Chinese authorities, you've said, have, and we heard from the evidence, have far stricter and more enforceable rules, obviously, than their Vietnamese counterparts?
Yes. Well, we haven't seen any indication of authorities cracking down on the illegal trades on social media at all during our investigation. As a matter of fact, while we saw a development in Ni K where trade was becoming, going more underground on social media, it was just as clear and open as ever.
Some kind of contradictory messaging.
And that also allowed us to understand that the trade was ongoing.
Another question for one of our panel members, perhaps?
Yes. Once again, congratulations for all the information provided. Now, usually, I was going to address the public sector corruption network protection, but my colleague has addressed that first. But usually, you also have, in cases like this, a private sector corruption network protection within the financial sector, the banking sector. We've seen bank accounts detailed. Do you have any further information other than that? Patterns of deposits? The way that, the modus operandi of how that money arrives to the banking sector?
I could say that the investigation, at least of the material I've seen, did not focus on that. I agree that certainly, if I were back in my old job as a prosecutor and I were a prosecutor, say, in Vietnam or China, probably the first thing I would do is cut a subpoena and try and get that bank account information. As I said in my opening, it was quite compelling to me that you're doing this illegal trade, which is quite massive. And at least in my experience, if this was New York City, I would be doing it in cash. That's what I would expect to see. The fact that they're doing it with reputable banks-- one of these banks is the largest bank in the world. And they're receiving cash in order to buy-- or in order for, as payment for wildlife traffic products. But go ahead, Ms. Verhe.
Well, you took the words out of my mouth, I think. Yeah. We weren't-- since we're an NGO, we don't have the authority, obviously, to go into these bank accounts. But as Mr. Asner says, that would be the first thing that authorities should do, really, to understand the quantity and who is receiving what and where it's going, to understand the illicit financial flows.
You also have to keep in mind that up until October, this was all undercover. Now, there were certainly efforts to reach out to the Vietnamese. But, you know, if you reached out to the banks and then they shut down these bank accounts, then that would close off some of the avenues of completing the investigation.
The branches are all the same, all the time? There's a concentration of branches for each of the banks?
There's different banks being used.
As I understand it, they're Chinese banks, not Vietnamese banks, is that correct?
Yeah.
So that requires reaching out to the Chinese government rather than reaching out to the Vietnamese government?
That's correct. And we'll talk about the reaching out to the Chinese government in a moment.
I've got just a couple of points of information I want to clarify. In one of the earlier slides, we had just over 1,000 kilograms of rhino horn valued by the WJC at $42 million. And then later on, we saw a clip in which rhino horn was being sold in a shop or hawked in a shop for $29,000 for a kilogram, which would be roughly $29 million if it was 1,000 kilograms. So there's a discrepancy there in between the actual-- your projected value of 1,000 kilograms and what we actually saw on the film. And I just wondered whether you have any comment on that discrepancy? I'll just go through-- I've got three questions. And I think the one thing needs clarification. You also mentioned, Mr. Asner, at that stage, that three kilos of rhino horn-- that one only need to sell three kilos of that rhino horn to buy a Mercedes. But of course, that 29,000 is not pure profit.
You're right about that.
That 29,000 represents a whole chain of value coming from Africa through to Vietnam. I think it's important to clarify that. And two other questions. I wondered whether investigators at any stage bought anything, bought any of these illegal products, or whether they witnessed or filmed a purchase and the handing over of money and goods at any stage? Second question. And the third question, purely point of information. When they're speaking Chinese, does anyone know whether they're speaking Cantonese or Mandarin or Fujianese or Shanghainese? I'm just trying to get a sense of where the buyers are coming from and where the wholesalers in China--
So let's break that up. And I'll take the mea culpa on the first one. My off-the-cuff calculation was a little weak. Forgive me. But let's go to-- could you describe for the panel-- and that was regarding the Mercedes, so it would probably be five rhinohorns or six. But I would like to say that math was my-- was not my strong point, but my background was in math, so-- I blame jet lag. So could you, Ms. Verhe, talk a little bit about how this calculation was done with respect to the 42.7 million of the rhino that we observed?
Yes. Well, I haven't done those calculations myself, and I have a similar problem with numbers as you do. But I'll try to explain.
I shouldn't, though.
What we did firstly, there's-- we had the raw products and the processed products. So there's the raw horns, and there's the teacups and the bracelets and the bangles, what have you. Both for rhino horn and ivory, we looked at all the raw products. And those-- basically, we took the price that we got in that shop, actually, so the $29,000 US dollars per kilogram. So we converted because many of these items, as you see, were placed on scales. So that allowed us to also understand the weight of those items. And then when there weren't items that were weighed on scales, we looked at similar items that had been placed on scales by other traders or by the same trader in order to get an average weight and average price for all of the processed products. And then we looked at the average value that was quoted to us by these traders. So we didn't take the high value or the lowest value, but the average value. And that resulted in this quite conservative estimate. We think it's a very conservative estimate. The illegal value is probably much higher than this.
But I think it's fair to say that we can talk to the investigators and before you deliberate, provide you with the calculation backup so you understand this. It's important for you to understand it. I think this-- at least the third question, and then hopefully, I'll say the third question and remember the second question. The third question was the language that they're speaking, which dialect of Chinese, whether it's Mandarin, Cantonese, Fujianese, et cetera. Do you know?
Mandarin.
Mandarin.
It's Mandarin?
Yes.
All right. And then the second, I believe, was, did the investigators make any purchases during the course of the investigation?
No, we did not. Out of principle, we don't want to contribute to illegal wildlife trade.
And did they witness any purchase? Any exchange of goods, any exchange of money?
I'm not sure, to be honest, to be really honest. But it was quite clear that Chinese buyers that they-- the Chinese individuals that they did encounter in all of these shops were clearly interested in purchasing products.
And one thing to notice, I mean, one way you handle that, if you were doing, say, a narcotics sting operation or a narcotics operation, you would make the purchases. And that would give you the credibility so that you could come back and make additional purchases. What happened here is because of that, the Wildlife Justice-- because they weren't making purchases, the Wildlife Justice Commission sent in, with each field mission, different sets of undercover operators. And interestingly, normally, when you're dealing with illegal goods, it takes some time to get credibility with the sales folks. You work ups-- you start small and work your way up, just like in the movies. But here, with the use of the interpreters, who already could pave the way, they were able to get to fairly significant access just showing up.
If there aren't any more questions, one from Justice Lenora.
Later, there'll be a session around the authenticity of these products. But on the ground, could the investigators, from the expertise, know that these are authentic products? And Pauline, you kept using the word "it appeared to be." Clarify that for me.
Yes. Our investigators that we sent to the field are often quite well-versed, understanding of wildlife trade as a topic. So they were able to-- for example, for ivory, as an example here, this is quite clearly a tusk from an elephant. But when it comes to ivory products, and this is all going to be discussed later, ivory can be discerned by the lines